All right, this is the meeting of the Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a five-member board, four members are here, so we have a quorum. I'm Eric Worth, the chair. Why don't you say your name, standing with Mary Ann?
I'm Mary Ann Remy.
John Martin.
Jesse King Charles.
All right. First item on the agenda is a workshop for fourteen Constitution Drive. Are you Mr. Scarpah?
I am, yes.
Would you like to come up and sit at the head of the table? At a workshop, we don't get into the merits of the application, we don't make any, don't make any decisions or it, we're just trying to get your application in final phase, so it's ready for the public to respond to and make sure that all the applicable rules of zoning are understood or so let's start, if you would just give us a brief summary of, of your project, not, you know, not the whole presentation, but just enough so we can help us orient ourselves in the application.
Sure. Well, thanks for meeting me tonight. So what we're really trying to accomplish with this application and going forward with a potential addition on the house is to add approximately four hundred and fifty square feet of livable area on the, the first floor, which is, you know, you have a, a small basin below, but, and into the backyard along the, the west side next to, you know, a joint's property. What that would do is allow us to add net one bedroom and expand out our bathroom. So we'll be going from three bedroom, one bath, to four bedroom, one bath.
Right. So we have a, a, a nice site plan here, page two, showing the, the new area in green. New, new addition when green, brown is existing. Setbacks are marked. We need to throw this girl from the building inspector.
Where is there from?
That's on top there.
Oh, you're that familiar with the neighborhood down there in Constitution? How long you been there?
I am about three years, three years, a little over three years, yeah. So gotten to meet a lot of the neighbors around there. Very nice, very nice neighborhood. A lot of small children.
It's great. Are you on the, the west side or east side of Constitution?
Um, it's the side opposite of, nah, with the ribbon back on, I have the, um, Kemble F behind them.
Yeah. So there really is no development behind you other than the field backroom?
Yes.
And in your understanding is it's sort of the project that you're looking at somewhat similar to some of the, the construction around you from your estimation?
Um, there are, so there are probably, I'd say about like eight or so houses that are very, like that are pretty much same footprint, same, you know, style, it's, it's how.
It's, it's your current footprint or?
As our current, yes. Um, or, or I guess, I just said the base, like the how the house was built. And there have been, um, yeah, before we moved in, uh, but walking over down the street, we could see that there've been some different sort of variations to, you know, just like additions, building out that porch. Um, I, I believe there's at least one or two that have a similar kind of a build out in the back. I don't know how, how large, um, scale, but there, there have been, and you saw it in the fifties. Um, you know, I, they do now kind of look a little bit different, but there've been some alterations.
So there's a full basement probably down below?
Uh, yes, it's a, it's a full basement, but it's not considered like livable space, it's, uh, a hundred and six and a half feet. Five or so, um, but there is a finish.
And, and the additional would likely end up in a removal of the sun.
Yes, yeah, it would, yes.
Yeah. Some, what appears to be sunroom or greenhouse.
It is, it's, it's a sun. It looks nice, but in the winter, in the summertime, it's, it's very, very powerful.
You need a tree in front of it.
Yes, absolutely. And I believe there was a tree.
Especially in the morning.
Yes.
Have you discussed the, this project with any neighbors?
Yes.
Are they familiar?
Yes, yeah, the, um, uh, the neighbors directly adjacent, that would be, uh, you know, the, the property line is closest where working, they actually recommended the architect. I'm talking about it with them, uh, we talked about it, we're, the neighbor's directly across the street from us, um, and potentially the neighbors are, uh, on the way. But I don't know if we don't go out of the show. Certainly that they were joining right there. And the addition we go. And we.
Is there any fencing on your property line at this point?
There is, yeah, there's fencing right on that, on that line.
And what is the height of that?
Six.
And does that go right up to the driveway, six foot or?
Yes, it goes, um, right up to, yeah, essentially right up to the driveway, and then there's just, on that side, on the front end. Now directed.
Looks to me that the, um, the zoning, um, provision that is at issue here is, um, one thirty-four dash nineteen G, as in Gary, it says non-conforming buildings, and that's what this one is, it's a pre-exists the zoning code and it does not conform the, the current structure, but it's grandfathered in. Non-conforming buildings may be enlarged, provided that such action does not increase the width of any part of the building located in a required yard. So, um, it's a non-conforming building, it's being enlarged, but the enlargement increases the width of a part in a required yard, and that is the side yard. The bulk of the building in the, that is located actually in the yard is being increased in width, so that's the that's the variance at issue here, we're being asked to make an exception for, on that, um, to that particular provision. Um, there is one other question, um, that I think um, that you should clear up for us at the hearing. Um, the drawing shows a new Bilko door, it extends um, just a little bit beyond the rear setback line, like about one or two feet. And the zoning code says that no, there may be, no structure is permitted within the setback area or the yard, and so, um, but structure is defined as being eighteen inches or higher, uh, something that's eighteen inches or higher. And if, if this Bilko door is typical, um, that last foot or two is undoubtedly less than eighteen inches. So if you could just confirm that for us, that will eliminate the, any problem with building in the rear yard.
Yeah, and that access to the basement, I imagine, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just. One of those slanted doors, like a hurricane door.
And it goes down?
It goes down into the basement.
Right, it leads to the basement, it's got those two big doors that pull up. It's a very.
It's easily seasoned to be a structure as soon as it hits the eighteen mark above the ground. And currently, it's not there. It's currently not there.
But it's part of the green addition here, it will be added, and it's shown as extending into the rear yard, so.
And, and to the side set, go ahead, second.
As well, yeah, but yes.
All, all together in the side.
That, that will, will be included in the other consideration, but just about the side yard, but just to eliminate the rear yard, if you could confirm for us, maybe if you had to get a little drawing showing like from a side view of the Bilko door, where the rear yard line is, what the height at that point is, just to reassure us that it's not going to be over eighteen inches in the rear.
Right, photographs mean everything, so, you know, try to pretend we're not there. And then you come in with, uh, you, you, you don't necessarily have to have photographs for everybody, you could just have a template that we pass around, so we can see what things will look like.
Yeah, that's a good, a good point, that's, it's not a requirement, it's not mandatory, but, um.
But for us to look at it and understand what, what's happening without showing up on your property, uh, it's pretty important, and, uh, just give us, uh, you know, maybe take a, a photograph or two of the, the most immediate neighbors, you know, what their backyards might look like, you know, just if we're supposed to look at an element of the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And I, I didn't look at it entirely, I missed it, but, uh, how about area, uh, coverage?
It's okay, it's twenty-seven, it's proposed as twenty-seven, and it, it has to be under thirty.
Yeah. That, is that, it looks like that's on the, is that here on the drawing?
I was looking for.
The chart, uh,
performance.
Yeah. Uh, so on the second page at the bottom. Proposed is twenty-three point nine, so performance is thirty, so we're good there.
Yeah, got it.
Related to the understanding, the the Bilko door, it seems like we've got elevations that could include the detail of the Bilko door, but don't. I think that would maybe provide some clarity about what we're talking about in terms of height and, and projection into the backyard. Kind of hinted at here, but, um, even if we just had, uh, some proposal on the actual height and.
Oh, the statement as to the height of the Bilko.
Well, like, like, we have, we have numbers for a lot of, for a lot of the points on this.
Yeah, but there, but the, the fact that there is a, a code requirement to be under eighteen inches, it should be reflected somewhere, and so somebody looking at this can find that information. And to say, oh, you know, the board overlooked that, it's not there.
And that's just at the rear.
Only, only. And only, only because it's in the setback, that it's important.
Right.
And so that information really should be in there.
Um, maybe also worth.
Uh, by the way, where do you want that mentioned?
Well, I, if it could be, I mean, I don't want to have to necessarily do a whole new elevation, if it could be easily included in, in this existing elevation, that would be great. Otherwise, a, a, a new rough sketch of.
Just a simple, a simple little sketch.
Yeah.
It's conveying to, it actually could just be verbal.
Well, let's make it part of the record by, you know, he doesn't have to make a ton, a ton of copies, you could just have one copy that gets included with the, you know, the whole record.
We just, it's really one date, piece of data, what is the height there at the, at the point of the rear setback line?
Okay, I think I did that, I should be able to provide that for.
Yeah, we're just supposed to cover these bases and that's all, and it's, it doesn't have to be a copy for everybody, like I said, just one copy and, and it gets included.
I think it would be good to be prepared to discuss the need for the Bilko door location where it is, considering it is in both um, setback, and there'll be a part of it that is actually an, an additional bit of, uh, it'll be in the side setback that is above the eighteen, because presumably has a top part that goes up, you know, up further. So, um, the what, what the motivation was for that design choice about putting it where it is versus shifting it over.
Right, because where, there's a reasonable option to do it otherwise to get out of a setback area, you have to explain why you opted for this where it could still go in to a non-setback area. So, you know, those things are looked at. You know, where you have options, so it, it's night, I mean, everybody would think, you, you know, the internal setup of your house and how it would be designed, what the flow would be and everything. Uh, we're, we're just simply looking at trying to find to accomplish your plan with the least amount of variances needed.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, I believe the Bilko was added late um, in the configuration design, and if, I guess, I'll, I'll, I'll get more, I guess, I'll go back to the architect that drew up the plans. Um, I would assume it was the way, reason it was put where it was, it's, it's furthest out of the way.
Yeah.
From the, you know, the rest of the backyard.
Yep, I don't see, where, where is, uh, it indicated what now the new length of the, uh, what I, if, if you're saying it's on the uh, the east side of Constitution Drive, it would be the north wall of your property for the structure. What is the length of that? Do you anticipate? I mean, I, I, I can't really see.
Or even the new projection?
Well, the, the, how, you know, going east to west.
Yeah, what is, how, how deep the, the builder?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think it's in, um, yeah.
I just want, uh, if, cause it's not on here, so I'm wondering if I'm missing something.
Yeah, I think it's that more detail. Yeah, it's, uh, it's eight, it's eighteen, eighteen feet, I believe.
A one, Plan A one is the new first floor.
Okay.
And it's got wall length.
Yeah. Right, so what, what's interesting about this, you're staying at one level, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, someday down the line, somebody might come in and say, well, I want to build everything through its second floor, which might become a little more problematic because it would tend to really throw a shadow over the next property, because the sun would be really to your south, you know, pretty much throughout much of the year, and, and you're building right up to the line, you're building, what is it, a foot off?
Or not, it's one foot, I think.
Yeah. So, you know, things like that are taken into consideration. And then, again, this is all hypothetical, but the next person might come in and say, it is great house, great footprint, we're going up. And the fact that it's built so close that that it's a bulk issue, really, I mean, what, what do you understand, I mean, you were working on the coding.
Um, well, that would be, I, I, I'm not overly concerned with what a future owner might do, or a future.
Well, we're not going to be concerned about it necessarily, but I'm saying hypothetically, I'm just thinking.
Um, well, that would also require variance, it, it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If he goes ahead with the one-story addition and someone later wants a second, that's all, that's part covered by that same provision, which says, it says not only width, but height.
Yes, okay, good. I just wanted, it's sort of an education to some people who haven't been on the board, to know that, because I'm familiar with it, but I'm just sort of trying to throw at people's heads, we've, we've dealt with this before.
Wanted to add, um, one thing to your application, um, as you know, you, you're going to be sending, um, uh, notices of the public hearing to your neighbors, and you have a list in your application form, there's two, two names that I believe should be added.
And, and how about the owner of the, of the, uh?
That's one of them, of Marathon?
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of them is the, the big lot behind you, the Marathon property. You, you do have to include them, because they are.
They're joining.
Joining, okay. And that's Kearney property, and you can get the mailing address from the village clerk or from the Putnam County e parcel site, which is, um, county, county, uh, real estate office as an online database that gives information about every property, it's called e parcel. But the village clerk also can give you that, and the second one is right across the street from you at eleven Constitution, Heidi and Michael Bender.
Yes.
They're really, they're direct, they are directly across, well, not directly, but they are across from you, and be prudent to include them as well.
Okay, and the sign.
Yes, and then in addition to mailing, um, the notices to neighbors, you'll need to post a sign in front, in front, uh, visible from the street, plainly visible. You get that from the village clerk. That has to go up at least ten days before the hearing, and the mailings have to be postmarked at least ten days before. I'll send you a, an email message in the next day or two with exact details about the mailing, like how to do it and what. I'll include, um, a PDF of the, of the notice itself, so that just we get copies made of that and, and simply mail that, that's all you mail.
Okay, and you'll do an affidavit as to how long the sign's been out in front, when it was posted?
Yeah, on the day of the hearing, there, there's an affidavit form that's in the application that you just need to complete the sign, just says that you're just attesting that the sign was up from X date until the date of the hearing.
Okay, and you said the sign can get from the village clerk?
Correct. Um, the soonest we could have a hearing and, and qualify for the deadlines is, uh, four weeks from now, and that means, um, let's see, today's the nineteenth, so that would be November second. Or sorry, no, that's the next meeting, the meeting after that. Um, the third Thursday, so that's the sixteen, November sixteenth at seven, would you be available then?
Yes, I will be. Um, I sometimes travel court, but I, I know for five, I'll be there on the sixteenth.
November sixteenth, okay. Other, other board members are?
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna miss the next board meeting, but I'll be available after. So.
Is it possible to join by Zoom if?
You have an extraordinary, they have to be extraordinary circumstances, like not routine, not predictable.
Right.
Like an emergency, family illness, um.
You were asking hypothetically in case something came up.
No, not.
I think one day they're gonna get used to the fact that Zoom is really helpful, except for the fact that, uh, due process sort of requires in, in person, or, but eventually, I think they're thinking we'll be good enough to be able to get beyond that, because they've done a lot of, uh, uh, testimonies and depositions and whatnot through Zoom, and, you know, when somebody's accusing you of something and they're doing it over Zoom, well, it's a lot less.
They used to be really weird about signatures by fax, like couldn't fax a signature, and now it's like you can click on something and email and it counts as a signature.
Right, that's right, so, yeah, there was one other thing. Oh, environmentally, uh, you know, just go through the five criteria in our head, let's see what we need, you know, from that. And the idea is you're displacing more natural ground where water would flow, how, how is it going to displace water, what, what are your intents on that? You know, like, uh, for rain and whatnot, now you're still only covering like twenty-seven percent, but.
Runoff.
Runoff.
Yeah, you, you don't have to answer now, but just, um,
Yeah, just.
That's one of the things, that's one of the criteria we look at um, in the hearing itself, or after the hearing, when we have our discussion, um, is the, any environmental impact? And with, with an addition like this, it can be things like runoff, um, because you no longer have, you have less ground to absorb water, so have you thought about that?
And where does the roof slant, like for instance, you're so close to the property line, that you know, drip lines would come into play here if it was, the roof was slanted, uh, you know, from the pitch ran from the top point ran from east to west, and it would pitch everything either towards the neighboring property or but, you know.
I believe that's the, uh, that's the idea, is that it would be pitched that way, so yes, the, the roof would slant towards the joint property.
Right, so you have to figure out how you're going to explain to us how all that water for the eighteen feet that runs along that entire developed now area, along that border, where you're planning on displacing that water, especially with the type of storms we're gonna have. And again, it's just, it's an environmental question, which is one of the criteria, these five criteria that we have to go through a variance, uh, analysis.
Okay.
And we will, um, another one of the, um, points we always look at in, in our discussion is, um, whether you have exhausted all alternatives to achieve your goal without needing a variance, like were there other, were there other ways you could have built the addition or designed the addition to achieve your goal without needing a variance?
Because everybody would love to have the bigger backyard, right? And, uh, the idea of setbacks is to be fair to property owners from one side to the next, to know that people are not going to build right to the line.
Wow, ju- just looking at your site plan, um, it, it kind of on its face, the question arises of why the addition is not on the other side of the house instead of this side, so you'd just be ready to answer that, why'd you put it on this side and not the other side? Because you wouldn't need a variance on the other side.
Yeah, that, that, that's the thinking, you know, the idea is that they come up with these rules for a reason, and, and, and the state, uh, and, and the case law requirements are that you have to think what is the least impactful way of accomplishing what you're trying to accomplish? In this case, the main thing you're trying to accomplish is to get a bigger house. You're looking for more space. So the question is, are you doing it sort of at the expense, uh, because this is the way the zoning code looks at it, of the neighbor by building really close to the line, I mean, I'm sure you wouldn't want them then building right up to your line, like within a foot. Uh, so this is how it plays out. So that's the thing.
Okay.
Remind me, does the overhang count as part of, uh, and set into the, into the setback, or is it only the structure that it's over?
Does not count, but there's like, as long as it's within a certain distance and, I'd, I'd have to look up the exact.
That would be a, a, a detail that would be good to provide is the amount of the overhang, and you can see it here, it does extend beyond what the current overhang is for the house. So knowing, uh, exactly what the, the new overhang is.
Yeah, we can look that up, there were issues about overhang in the past.
Yeah.
Especially when, mostly it's when structures are built right against the property line.
Yeah, it can be relevant.
Because again, it is the same question that they put in the, uh, the analysis, is the environmental impact, uh, you know, developing the property can have those impacts, uh, you know, it becau- it can become a nuisance for the neighboring property. And, and that's just, again, this is just the way they look, so the laws protect you, and if you're developing, they can work against you, or, you know, agai- against the, the design that's in your mind most optimal for making the best use of your personal property to come at the expense of neighboring property. And that's what they're looking at, and that's what the balancing is.
Understood, here it is, building projection. Hornaces or cantilevered roofs may project not more than three feet into a minimum setback area. Um, belt courses, window sills, and other ornamental features may project not more than six inches. And that's, um.
So I think, I think that's, the reason why that's important to consider is that technically based on that read, I think the additional projection of, of the overhang into the setback actually increases the non-conformity into that setback even more than the ex- expansion of the house, right, because you're not just extending it back, there's also a slight extension out.
Uh, could you please, uh, the citation?
Yeah, it was, um, one one thirty-four dash seventeen subsection, um, yes, the, it looks like the subsection lettering got kind of messed up in this, this is a new code that was just passed earlier this year, and it's still a little rough, but, um, it's, it's that, that's a, that section is just a couple of pages long, and it's a paragraph by itself, it's called building projections. So it shouldn't be too hard to find. Is, Jesse, did you see, where did you, did you see the, uh, projections?
Yeah, the new east elevation on A dash four B had, I mean, it, it's hard to tell, because there's no, there's not numbers on it, but if you had to like ballpark it, you might say it projects eight inches beyond the current footprint of the, of the roof line.
East elevation, yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah, right, huh.
And the other thing, when you're looking at that, is uh when we talked about runoff and everything. So the front part of the building, the the uh top pitch will still.
Will be a corner there.
Yeah, it'll be a corner, so you're not, what is the depth of the new um? The new portion of the structure going to the rear, what is it about?
You mean eighteen feet?
Eighteen, yeah, yeah, so it. It, you know, I'm looking at the front of the building, the front building has um. The rainwater going to the front of the house and the back of the house, rather than all pitched to the to the neighbor's side, so.
There's no, there's actually no pitch to the neighbor's side on that.
On that portion, yeah, yeah. Just pointing that out. Which makes it less complicated that you're throwing too much water over there.
But it does, there potentially, you are getting runoff from both. The extension roof and from the main roof.
Oh, yeah, cuz it comes into a. You might think of a well or something particularly down right at the corner where it meets.
Yeah, I don't see a um. A downspout planned here, I don't, I'm not a a a water person, I just like that would be.
Would it become a big deal?
Yeah, yeah, uh we we have a lot of trouble with that, so.
But 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 you know, if you were within the setback or only encroaching two feet into the setback. It would seem less problematic, because you're so close to the property line becomes much more of a concern for us to. You know, consider because.
Okay, um, I didn't have anything else, it looks in good shape, um. We covered names of neighbors to be added to the list. Pickup sign. Um, I'll I'll be sending you an email message about how to do the mailings, um which includes the notice. Op- optional provide photographs at the hearing itself. That will that will help board members understand the surroundings.
Can I just print those out like on four by six and bring them up?
Yeah, and you only need one set of copies, we'll just pass it around.
We can come to the house if you want, have it in the bag.
We we do, but we can't do it as a group because otherwise it's considered a meeting and it has to be put on notice. So so you know, a lot of times we go by individually just to take a look, uh, the other thing I would recommend is not only. Uh, you know, just take sort of just general pictures of the neighborhood. So that we can get a a spatial understanding of how the houses all sit on there, and it's just. Can be pretty much pro forma unless there's a big monstrosity of a house being considered. But again, it's just we're, one of the questions is the character of the neighborhood. And whether uh the new proposed structure is sort of less in conformity or general conformity with. What's around, and and again, that's more variable unless the house being considered is a monstrosity and working from. One side to the other and eating up. Uh, in in excess of the normal area space allowed coverage. But it just gives, you know, rather than just from your backyard and looking at the neighbors, it's just. Some kind of an overview, sometimes people bring in what you almost have here, but it's a very tight. Thing, they almost have a a satellite imagery. Uh, but confined really to like. Constitution Drive that we can see. Yeah, Google Maps, that would be great. That that would be always, that is always to me very, very helpful, to to see. What the overall footprint design. And we we've all, I mean, we've always asked for that, you know, in the past, especially when you're you're building. Uh, a structure or main structure out. But I don't have any other questions.
Good. Anyone else? All right, that's that's it.
All right, thank you all. Thank you as well, and um so I'll I'll plan. In advance of the meeting, right?
That's the deadline for um. The. For postmark on the mailings and for posting the sign.
Okay, so I have that uh at the meeting's sixteen. I have just the fifth, just to be safe.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't hurt.
You should.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't hurt to do it earlier, no harm.
And the other thing is, it it ha- how how has how's that all into information brought in as to confirmation of uh the mailing?
I'll cover that in the message, just uh we'll see the receipts of the mailings, that's all.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate that.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is review of draft resolution. For our last decision. Let's take a minute to look at.
Yeah.
The draft.
And I ask you, uh, were we actually considering an area variance?
Uh, that's what it is, um. Fence height is.
Oh, that's an area.
Yeah, dimensional, area is not the best term, dimensional might be a better.
Yeah, I get it, I get.
Anything that involves dimension.
I got it, I got you now, okay.
We're only allowed, there's there's only two types, right, use and and.
Yeah.
Try to keep it simple. It's it's okay if they just have two, that's that's fine. Uh, thank you for preparing all that. Okay, so we haven't put in uh the motion was. Was made by and seconded by and so forth.
Yeah, so once.
That's all on the minutes, right?
No, this, that would be the voting on this draft tonight.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, the draft is dated today, and we vote on it, and then whatever the vote is gets put in.
Ah, yeah, no.
In the minutes or on?
In this, at the end.
So I, you know, I know we're on the. I mean, uh. But I. There there was discussion, and I don't know how much we get into it uh with regards to the privacy issues and everything. Uh, we we probably, I don't think we have to really do that. I mean, cuz most of this answers it, that that was the major uh request, but you've sort of hinted at it.
Privacy not being a su- a sufficient criterion.
Yeah.
You know, um.
It but but on top of that, the the other thing, with all due respect, that I heard. Of people who attended uh the planning board meeting is that um. It was stated to be, uh, the reason why they got. What they got, it was on the basis of when you had a commercial property, it was usually a caretaker's house. So they got approval for using a full print, full print on on the basis of a caretaker's house, and that's, and and it was switched from. Commercial to residential. And the main argument is that there would be no real traffic there.
Well.
And that's what was stated, uh you know, so it corroborates what somebody else said. Um, you know, and which was different from what we were hearing.
These are all. Issues that we are objections that we raised and found in our.
Yeah, I I I'm just.
And they're more than sufficient, I think.
I think what you have here is good, I just wondering. Maybe, and we probably don't have to get to, cuz it basically just handles it, but you know, sometimes. The fact that the the main defense or uh the 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 argument for uh the height was privacy.
Well, that is, that's actually addressed, not the word is not used, but but the 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 desired benefit is defined in terms of privacy. Two forms of privacy deterri- deterring curious pedestrians and screening activities in the building, those are both facets of privacy.
I agree, well, that I agree with that, so it it's indirectly stated.
Nice questions, um, obviously I wasn't here, so I didn't hear firsthand, but I read the. The preliminary minutes from it, and. I was curious whether or not the description of the use. Actually still falls under the live work. Use as defined in the new zoning. And they said they had many full-time workers that are there all the time.
Um, well, none of that was um documented. So it really has no reality.
It wasn't in our record, number one.
Well, yeah, there's no no evidence was presented, I mean, like any board or any.
Sure.
Judicial body, we have to rely on evidence. And they didn't present any, so it's really not a factual, those aren't facts.
However, however, I think it's important, and I'm sorry to interrupt Eric, but that I think in the future, because it's a public record. And we're dealing with that property. That I think in the future, we come up with something that went under the planning board and and how the use. Was being made, and when you get arguments like that, which I think will anticipate easily, because often it's a privacy question. Uh, that we look into. What the planning board said some about something, because it's public record, so whether whether the fact that the parties who came before us. Did not introduce that. Uh, we could simply uh say, well, we're. Looking back to what was said at the planning board, and this is what was expressed to be the intent in order to get what you were given. Meaning, you know, the type of use, what was anticipated. Because in 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 this particular case, there was a discrepancy between what was said at the planning board and what was said before us.
Yeah, I guess, um, I I guess.
They call it judicial notice.
Hypothetically.
When something's a public record, a board or uh can take judicial notice of a public document. Or statements that were on the record, when it deals with the specific property.
Okay.
And you don't, we don't have to fly in the blind.
But how would that have impacted?
Oh, well, right away, we would have, I would have referenced right away, in the planning board. We can see that the argument was that there would be no cars coming, there would be no. Curators coming, there would be no regular employees, there'd be be, there would be no uh. You know, thirty group visitors showing up.
Okay, well, we denied it anyway, so.
No, I just.
Giving giving further.
But what it would have made our job easier if we sat and listened to it a lot more than we probably had to, cuz we could have gone right to the quick.
You know, it's be a burden to have to do that research before.
I'm not putting it on you, I'll do it. I'll do it, it takes me to walk into the the main uh office here and just pull the statement on the uh on the property.
My question was. Meant to be.
You do not, by the way.
More more educational on my on my side of understanding. If if things, if if something surfaces in in uh either. A workshop or in the actual hearing itself. That suggests that. There is a, there is actually not just an area variance, but a use variance happening. Or like, are we obligated? To say, to actually point it out to the code enforcement officer and say. Based on what was said at this public hearing, it's in the public record, it appears that there's a use, a a violation of. Acceptable use and therefore.
Um, I'm. You're going a little beyond what I feel confident. I mean, that's a kind of advanced question.
Okay, yeah.
Wh- when inconsistencies arise, um, statements from an applicant. Contradict. Um, or seem to violate um. Other uh requirements. Um, what is the, what is the effect?
Well, there should be no, there should be no problem that we share that information, cuz number one, we didn't put that information out there, it was put out there by the applicant themselves. So they put it out there, uh, and what we simply do is uh share that information. With the other responsible uh boards or agencies, just ju- just so everybody's on board and there's not a a sort of a. A cutoff that that information can't get through, there's no reason why it cannot be mentioned. And what is done from that point forward? You know, it you.
Right.
You know, we we might be able to say it in writing, or but but we'd have to be certain about what we heard, so it all depends on the 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 nature of what we heard. And whether we would put in writing or simply pass it on by verbal understanding, and I mean, there there have been. Several issues where. Variants were were sought here, and and we granted just so much, and certain things had to be done. That were never done, and things were looked at the other way, I would get Donald McDonald, I, we walked through the neighborhood and we just sort of laughed, I mean. They come before us and then they do what they wanna do. And then, we we're we're not the code enforcement officers, we're asked to do one thing, make decisions. But at the same time, if we hear certain things that may impact other things, there's no rea- and it comes from the applicant, there's no reason why we should pass it on. To the people. Who could do something about it.
Or at least they're responsible, and if they fail in their responsibility, that's on them.
And I would think that we we oh, we would fail in our responsibility, cuz we are in part, we're not. We we are enforcement in part, but only on an oversight and appeals of uh what is specifically brought before us. Uh, but it doesn't. Stop us from making mention of something, I mean, you know, most people are doing things on a volunteer basis. So you know, you work together, you're not trying to undermine anybody or anything, but wh- what we are trying to do as volunteers. Is to preserve the community the way it was intended to be preserved under the code. We we, you did take an oath. So.
Um, Jesse, you emailed me a question about one of these.
Oh, I did, I was curious, I'd uh. This is probably just in unfamiliarity with some of the language, but um my read of uh the. Second to last, whereas. Seemed uh. At odds with. In in effect with the other parts, and I, and it could just be that specifically this uh. Notion of effect on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood is a thing that is. A thing that I'm not entirely sure what that encapsulates.
You wouldn't be alone in that, it's I, it's a poorly written, that language comes straight from state law, and it's, the law is poorly crafted.
Okay.
And it's it's not clear what, how that differs from. Undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and detriment to nearby properties, I mean, they're all. Um, overlap, and why? Um, but um, but the the intent here is to be limited to physical and environmental conditions, whatever that. However, we we can screw that. Um, so yeah, like, we read that usually as things like um. Uh, airflow, sunlight.
Obviously noise or.
You know, rainfall displacement.
Yeah.
Okay. Impacts. So the previous whereas says there is that there that the.
Substantial, yeah.
Yeah, just.
The the request, is it a big request?
Yes.
Or that a small request, that's left again, it kind of vague, but.
But it's meant to be vague, and it it's sort of vague, but it's fairly direct, see, a lot of times, they came up with this five-question test. Only about ten fifteen years ago, because boards didn't know where to start and where to end with their questioning to try to figure it out. So the uh Court of Appeals stepped in, the state's highest court, and said, okay, we're gonna go through this test analysis. And we're gonna give. Cuz they know, you know, most board members are not attorneys or anything like that, and even if you were an attorney, doesn't mean that you would get the right answer, so they said. This is the path you walk down. That's what they did.
Yeah, to try to in- impose some objectivity on the process.
That's 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 the other thing.
In structure, I mean, it's helpful.
Yeah.
We we we've always been hung up on the question of substantiality, is that numerical or is it, is it in effect? You can have a small number with a big effect, or a big number with a small effect. And how, you know, what is substantial, given those two sides of the coin?
But it's also a kind of system, so you can look at it with every factor that you're just mentioning.
The the discussions I've always read say, well, you should just stick to the numbers, you know, be objective, stick to the numbers, but that's not.
The numbers guy can say that you can, you can be certain on a a a number cha- numeric change, but it can't tell you how important that that number is.
When when you talk about living environment. When when you talk about living environments, just how, you know, feet don't tell you anything, it's because there's so much else going on.
Yeah, the zoning laws is is it's fairly interesting, it sounds sort of uh obtuse, but you know, and Eric has done this, I know, because I've heard him speak after we've had a conversation or two in a year or two in the past. But that you, when you go online and, you know, all the local agencies all have zoning boards and whatnot, and, you know, including even Phillips Tap. And you look at what they're looking at and you hear what their their rationales are. And then the old, and then you would say, well, you know, they may have a different law, and they could, and so you look at what it, what is the verbiage in that law? But at the same time, they still have to go through the five criteria. So it gives you a way of understanding of how the boards rationalize things out, it and it's all understood that, you know, we're all volunteers and we're coming here just really with the mindset of the first thing we have to do is try to abide by the code as much as possible and grant the minimum variance that is really needed within the applicant's plan. You know, uh with the conscientiousness of that we're trying not to be overly impactful on the remaining parts of the neighboring area. And and that's really what it comes down to, so I would advise going online and I, you know, and just going and just reading it and seeing how they think.
Yeah, I wish they had more of those available, um, or more kind of annotated discussions, it would be helpful, but so sometimes the state does that.
Yeah, I've bought books online, which you can get pretty inexpensively, where you, you know, different zoning books where you can hear and see how they analyze things and it and all of it is just, because in the end, you're analyzing. You know, you're not gonna follow verbatim what they're doing, you're analyzing and you're seeing how they look at it.
Okay, so Jesse, to answer your question, um, it it is, in fact, that is in fact what happened, which is that we we thought the the um undesirable effects on the neighbors and the character of the neighborhood would be great and yet the physical and environmental effects would be small or minimal.
Gotcha.
And those are two different.
Yeah, two different things.
Whereas the, and the variance itself is substantial.
Yeah. Okay. So I would move to approve the resolution written, I don't see any need, I I personally don't see any corrections or anything, I thank you for putting it together.
I'll I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous. Now, let's do a brief, I'll give you a brief presentation on the application form. We spent the last couple of meetings, I've been referring to it, easing into this, um, since we have the new code, our existing form is obsolete, so um here are three pages as a starting point. The first page is the new table of dimensional requirements, and this is like the masterpiece of information in the new code.
Masterpieces.
Yeah, it's a masterpiece. And um in a, in a single table, it gives you all the dimensions for each zone. And um.
And thank you for putting this together.
Yes, uh and and notice there are now three residential zones, before there's primarily just R one, that was the dominant um zone for mi- most properties, now R O and R N are about equal in number and there are quite a few R Ls as well. So page two is the ta- is the worksheet in current current application form. And it's just, it's tailored just for R one. So the problem, among the problems here, besides the fact that it's confusing and has some mirrors is that um we we can't just adopt this because we have three residential zones.
I think we just get three different statements uh that deal with it.
Well, page three is what I'm suggesting and we can take a different direction, um, it occurs to me, why not just leave it up to the applicant? Just, we're really only talking about a handful of features or handful of measurements. So what I'm suggesting is a worksheet that works for any zone. They they start first line, they they write down their zone. R R O, R N, whatever, then they circle, whether they're talking about the principal building or the accessory and accessory structure. Then they go down to the table, first column is the key features, the setbacks, number of stories, height, lot coverage. Table, uh, second column B is they just copy, they look it up for themselves, what they're supposed to comply with.
Well, you know what's nice about that? They can better understand their own application when they show up the board.
Yeah, and we're usually only, we're gonna be talking about a couple of numbers like tonight. Um, so they they fill in twenty feet, ten feet, whatever, um, then table C is their proposal. Their proposed dimension, um, and then table D is the difference.
I think that's really good, because it gets them thinking about what they're asking for, how it differs from what's already there.
Yeah.
I I think that's.
Hey, it's really good.
Okay, you have the 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 listing of the 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 zoning district that you're, that you're, that are as relevant.
So let's spend some time with this um after the meeting and.
If you have any insight, we'll 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 let you know.
See if, um, I would get, the key thing is kind of run some test cases against it and see, will this fail?
The the main one that just to throw out there is this is, this is for area variance only.
Yes.
But that's all the other one was for, and that area variances are ninety-eight percent.
Barely used, uh, and that goes usually to the planning board.
Right.
They want to look at that first.
Well, that they, that's a change of use, that's typically someone would go there and get a change of use versus getting a use, because this this standards for getting use variance are very high and difficult to achieve.
So this is predominantly what we're gonna deal with, yeah, and when it comes to a use variance. We'll we'll be educated.
Yeah.
It it'll be different. Um, there like, there was one use variance that came to us once, they wanted to convert uh their house, uh their very sizable garage, two stories into a living residence, and the bottom line on that.
Accessory apartment?
Yeah, but you know, you really can't have two livable structures on one block, you know.
Well, we allow accessory apartments now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's different.
Now it's different.
Yeah.
Back then it wasn't, I see.
They have to, to get a use variance, they have to show economically that they can't get a return on their property.
Yeah.
All kinds of tech- technical stuff.
Right, but we haven't decided that typically the planning board has taken the helm on that.
Right.
Because it does impact the neighborhood and everything, and and it really does more go to planning, in my estimation, when you talk about uses. Except for special uses to be given, because that can, that's only by permit for one year, which has less of a an impactful uh, you know, going forward. Go ahead, Eric.
No, I didn't have anything.
The only, do you, um, do we want to make a reference to where they could look up the zoning?
Yeah, just say C, such and such.
Ah, yeah, that's a good point, um.
Yeah, just say C uh code sections.
Both the map, actually, they they can find it on the map.
Yeah.
Which is in the chapter one thirty-four two.
Yeah, you, so and it's a subsection, the map itself? C fantasy.
Even colorized for Matt.
Thanks, Eric. It's been colorized for a long time. Colors keep changing.
Yeah. You tried really hard to put some textures in there. Didn't quite work out.
All right, so um, this is.
Really good.
Well, we visited it, we visited it at the next meeting.
Try to fill it out.
Okay, so we look at the minutes?
All right, um, Eric and and the board members, just so I'm clear before we get to the minute, the vote on the resolution. Um, John, you made the motion.
And Mary Ann seconded.
Mary Ann seconded.
And all in favor.
Okay, and I I'm just, because I want to be clear, if Jesse wasn't here for the public hearing, is he abstaining? Or is because he was here for the workshop?
Uh, he should abstain.
He can, he 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 could watch the minute, he could have watched.
But he didn't. Did you?
He did, he.
Oh, did you watch it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think a note should be made to that effect in the minutes.
Okay, yeah, that makes, just to, I mean, potentially could be an objection, so yeah, make it clear in the minutes that Jesse had protested that he watched the minutes.
But and also attended the workshop.
Yes.
Yeah, so it it just makes it a little bit more complete then.
Well, the vote was a majority with even while, even if you abstain, it's the same.
It was still a majority, but I think this is a good exercise in stating what we're stating, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, that's a good point, thanks.
Really good point, thank you.
So two minutes, the first is September seventh. Let's, let's.
Okay, I was not there, I don't think for that, so, and Jesse, I guess you were here and Mary Ann?
For the seventh, yes.
John will stand.
Doesn't hurt.
There's one sentence I would sort of massage a little, um, halfway down page one. Under the bulleted list, the second sentence beginning, applicant therefore seeks a variance. I would just have that go on to say, uh, seeks a variance to increase the height of the portion of the fence in the property's side yard to six feet, so that it matches the six-foot fence allowable in a rear yard.
Get all that, uh, Karen?
I I have it noted here, so.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, I.
I I, that sounds right, that sounds.
Just just a quick, kind of clear up the language, make it a little more.
Clear, and it's also clear, really, it, you know, visually.
At the top of page two, since the the key point of a workshop is to determine whether the application is ready, I think we should always state that. Um, and therefore I would start this paragraph, the one that now begins E worth explained, I would start it with the board deemed the application ready for a public hearing. E worth explained. Blah blah blah. Put that in offensive A. Everything.
You want me to make some changes, Eric?
I've already got them typed in in my copy, so I'll just send you a final with my signature.
So it can be approved with a note.
As a matter, yeah, if somebody wants to move, we do that.
Uh, and we approve the minutes as a member.
The minutes of September.
September seventh, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
And the next is October fifth.
We're seeing this with the word rehabilitating. The the full tear down.
Right, where's that?
Uh, or describing how Ms. M Peterson noted, would describe the application. Uh, that applicant Nina Abney LLC had been rehabilitating thirty-seven First Street for several years.
It was not torn down.
Oh, was it?
No, she kept basically the shell.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was a lot of cinder block that was kept. So. It, yeah, that that comes down to another whole argument.
Gotcha.
But uh they they did preserve uh, eh, because it was pretty well-built. As it was. They really just sort of got it, like, I've walked inside of it, you know, when they were in the middle of I've had, I had so many materials delivered to my house that were meant for that property for construction. I kept saying, guys, if you're looking for these materials, it's down here. See what we're building, I walked in there, massive, massive, it's just beautiful.
Would you live up here?
Yeah.
Oh, we're neighbors.
Yeah.
I'm at thirteen, at thirteen, yeah.
I'm at sixty, I'm right across from the mayor's street, uh, mayor's parking, uh, mayor's, uh right, well, park field, uh, entrance gate. The flat roof house was smaller.
Gotcha.
Great name, uh, the Springbook uh President has.
Robert Plant?
Yeah, yeah.
The Robert Plant.
The Robert, yeah.
Robert Plant also sort of recall that he was not particularly opposed to foot fence.
His comments were ambiguous, he was like, you know, on this hand, but on the other hand.
I think he was trying to be good. Maybe a better word.
Yeah. But I I think I remember, for that reason, didn't I deliberately actually say to him, so do you oppose it? And he said, yes. So I tried to get him, nail it down on that.
You you did, you did, uh, yes, and that that'll be, that's right there in the video.
He he definitely said, um, serious, could use the phrase serious concerns, something like, one could have serious concerns about this fence. So, um, it was there, his, I think his underlying purpose was there, just was couched very politely.
Especially when you're living across the street. Almost done, boy, in five minutes, bye.
On page one, under the heading Public Hearing, it says Workshop on, so that's not, that's not accurate, so just delete that and start with application for a variance. Start with application for a variance.
Yeah, I mean, I I. Yeah, thi- this is all just, and and everybody wants to keep the minutes shorter, I'm looking at the the second page, like, third sentence down. Like using the port, porta potty, I mean, to, I would say, like, the workers' porta potty, was it at the rear of the property? So I think the suggestion that people were really walking across the property.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I I, cause I I've walked by there and the porta potty is a little bit set back, and I think it was done really for the neighbors to the north, that they didn't see. Porta potty like right, right, very long side of the house. So I would say using the workers', apostrophe, S apostrophe, porta potty at the rear of the property, comma. And then everything else is the same. And then. The the comment midway down on that second page, uh. Regarding, uh, Steve Rust, who is the next door neighbor, uh, where his mom also lives. Uh, right at the last sentence, he noted that the Riverview Restaurant on the opposite side of his residence does not have a fence. And 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 has truck, truck traffic. So. He was basically saying it doesn't have a fence, but he was trying to also point out. Uh, you know, and it does have truck traffic, but we don't really need one offense there. Uh, so. Because the argument is, whi- which was pointed out even i- down in the the two paragraphs just below that was that, the. The, um. Counsel for the applicant. Had stated right in that last paragraph, uh, just above where it says board comment, that last par- paragraph sentence, it says she for the notice building. Is not only a residence, but a fully functioning commercial business with full, which is exactly like Marie early walked across the street from me. Across nine D the other day, seeing me walking out of the library to say, I washed everything. This was completely the opposite of what they thought. Thinking for.
Oh.
And and specifically as to this kind of this sentence here.
Yeah.
That that that, all that was. It stated to be, uh, you know, not the case, that it would be just really residential property with very little, uh, traffic.
Yeah, well, um. What's matters is what actually happens.
Yeah.
What actually goes on, it's, um. John, where, what was the previous one about the, um, truck traffic?
Yeah, right at the, uh, end where it says, uh, Steve Rust, right at the bottom, and 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 then. After the comma and right at the last sentence, uh, s- second part of the last sentence, he knows the review restaurant on the opposite side of his residence. Does not have a fence and has truck, truck traffic. So hi- his suggestion was, we have truck traffic.
But I don't see that point, at that spot.
Oh, it's at the end of the third paragraph in public comment.
On the second page.
I wonder if I have a. Maybe I don't have the more, the up to date.
Here, take a look. I put it right, and he wrote it.
Yeah, um, I don't have that.
So what his point was, which really.
Maybe I have it here.
Yeah, his point was, which would be validated, the argument was being made on the applicant's part that we have truck traffic. We want, we wanna protect you from having to see that, and he goes, don't worry about it. I already got traffic, traffic right on my north side with the Riverview Restaurant, and I don't need a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
That's the point. And I'm sure that I I know there's a lot more truck traffic. Uh, uh, you know, at the Riverview than there would be at the applicant's address, and even. Twenty to thirty feet down from there, at the most, there's significant truck traffic. Going in and out of the depot area, which, which is all incredibly visible to, uh, the neighbor. Uh, because it's all downsloping. And that's all they would see, it's structural and by unless they threw up a six-foot fence, but they don't believe in six-foot fences. They believe in more of the view shade.
Yeah.
So they're like, we'll tolerate, look, I live across from the store treatment. It's, that says it all right there. I didn't put up any.
Turn your head a little bit.
Yeah, I gotta, that's why I gotta crack in my neck. I'm always looking north. Somebody once said, I I put a, and the funny thing is still there, it's a joke, because it's not operated for over five or six years. They go, why the hell did you put a TV set? In the southwest corner of the window. Of that bay window that overlooks all the Hudson Highlands. And I said, so I didn't have to see the store treatment. And that, and that Sony tube TV is still in that corner. Who has a tube TV? I couldn't possibly get rid of it if I tried now.
I think they're hard to lift, too.
Oh. The la- I had two of them, one of them, we had to like push down, we had to wait till it snowed, pushing down the slope.
And so you wouldn't have any other changes?
No.
They look good.
Eric, thank you for doing everything.
Move that we.
Approve the minutes?
The minutes of October second, as as amended.
As amended. Uh, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, except for extension.
Yeah, so what we are going to keep, what are we gonna keep here? We're gonna keep, uh, the new draft here, right? So put that over.
And I guess Karen, you'll keep the application.
Oh, this application will be needed. Okay. And Karen, thank you for putting everything together. And thank you for saving my iPad. I walked out without it the other day.
Oh.
I I I must have been in a huge hurry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering now, going back to the resolution.
Yeah.
Um, if you watch the entire thing, is he eligible then to not have to abstain on the minutes? Or?
Well.
Or, well, there were other things discussed.
Yes.
At the minutes that maybe.
Um. It doesn't matter either way, since we approved them.
And we also had, we're gonna be also, we also had a, uh. Uh, a quorum.
Right, right.
And we have a quorum now to prove.
Better to be conservative and. And not even abstaining. I just don't know the law on that.
Uh, interesting, we'll we'll check that out.
I mean, if if we're worried about it.
Well, no. I I think that you watched the hearing part, okay.
Send to me afterwards.
Okay, that's fine.
You have to watch every minute of it, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly. So Eric, you're gonna make those changes and then send it to me?
Do any other business?
Yeah, let's go out and party.
Okay, no.
I I got that friend calling me, and then he's he's gotta go work tonight, so I gotta.
Move that we, uh, end the meeting?
I second that.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye, thank you for everything, Eric, really, seriously, that does a lot of work there, and. I'll I'll do the investigation on any properties that have seemingly have issues that go back.
Long-term properties, yeah, that had previous approvals.
Yeah, I'll do that, so I. They said, oh, you wanna be chairman, and I said, no way. I've only been on the board about seventeen years, and and it's work, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anywhere you can delegate any of these?
Thank you so much, really, I mean, yet.
That, at times, think about it.
Well, I think, I think not just as a, as a, of of work burden relief, but as a, I I mean. There is value in socializing what's actually required to produce these documents, then.
I would learn a lot if I, if I. Needed to do something, you know what I mean?
Right.
You know, I'm present, I'm present in a little sunny point board, and the prior president was like my brother, smart didn't. But he did everything, he he was like a one man.